Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.
We've been in a workshop and we have a few items that have kind of come in late here to... To be discussed, one of the issues that's come to me, and we'll take it up first, is restaurants on wheels are showing up here in our city. And we've had some complaints raised concerning restaurants on wheels, but the concerns being that people are coming here and competing for the food dollars. People that eat out. And their facilities basically is a cooking kitchen and a serving window. And the restaurant owners are saying, "We've invested in established business. We provide public bathrooms for the customers to use. We made them compliant to ADA so that our customers can get in and out. That cost us extra. We've got a tax base that we pay. And you basically let someone roll in here with a restaurant on wheels and compete with us." And at this time, I don't really know many ordinances we've got that would really... I don't know many ordinances that we've got that would really prohibit folks from coming in and getting approved by the Health Department, buying a license and opening up the business. And I don't know how you guys feel about it. It's the first time I've been approached with this idea of, do we need to regulate it or not? But I'm throwing it on the table for discussion. I just don't know what to do with it.
Well, I felt sure there'd be something we'd say to take, "You can't do that. Just come in and I think you gotta have..." I always thought, of course, being in the restaurant business, pretty heavy. If I'm still in it, that would really aggravate me pretty bad that I'm paying taxes on...
This is my doctor calling about my blood work I had done from the cancer. I'm gonna call if we run that. Hello?
What about this law gone, something over there? You know, they come in very regularly.
Small John, small John, small John.
He might be lost too.
Yeah.
He can't get his shit right.
Yeah. John, right? Well, you know, being in business, that's just not, not right.
Somebody's being worked out of the back of the truck, you know, to sell something where you're having to have a status.
I've got, with y'all's permission, I've got NACOG's specialists in this kind of ordinances, contacting Scott Hunt to review our ordinances. And then I'd like to bring this back. Once we get this done, we're gonna have them to contact our attorney. And there will be some discussion about what other meters that are doing. And I didn't know we were gonna have this problem come up, but we've got one or two that's already shown up. We have a pizza wagon wanting to have two spots up there near the court square. This has kind of started, and then we've got another established place down here on the south end of town. And a third, a third one about to show up in a few days, as I understand it, that's portable. So then I've had some comments from people that have establishments that they want us to review our ordinances. And I think it might be something we'd want to take a look at. With y'all's permission, I'm gonna get some research done on that issue and then bring it back. If we have to make an ordinance or pass an ordinance, if it's recommended that we do, then we'll address it. But I just want y'all to know that I'm getting some complaints here at City Hall concerning portable kitchens.
Well, I can understand it if I was still in the restaurant business, why I'm sitting here building and paying taxes. They're not, really probably not paying any taxes yet.
Is Scott Hunt coming to this meeting?
I thought he was, but evidently he's not.
Okay. Wade and I walked down to the back lawn about a week ago and kind of did a inside... We went inside, opened the door, and went inside. You shouldn't see us climbing up in there.
I hope nobody...
I hope nobody got a picture of it. We managed to get inside it. And their building's experienced a lot of weathering over time. And the interiors have nobody refurbished or refinished. The outside's been painted and some decorative work done, but the interior is basically untouched and raw. If we were to make a museum out of this, I don't expect that we'd be looking at... Moving costs, we've had an estimate of around ten to fourteen thousand. The foundation that we're gonna have to lay, we've got a four-footings floor behind the sack, new block work. We're talking another six to ten thousand. Refurbishing the building, replacing the rotten wood, and getting it totally refinished and windows put back in and steps up to it. Probably gonna be another forty or fifty thousand by the time we get it done. The specifications we have to work to for it to be declared safe to enter and exit. So it's a gift, it's a nice gesture, but it's gonna be an expensive gift to receive from the city. And we need to decide whether or not we're gonna accept this gift and vote on it. I'd like to put it on the next agenda with y'all's permission. And with that thought in mind, it's not only gonna take a lot of maintenance and upkeep to make it a worthy item for the city to be proud of, but it's gonna take maintenance. It's a wooden building. You can't get away from certain maintenance on wood that's required. It weathers, and it's gonna continue to weather through years. And I don't really know, except being an authentic old building, what we'll have as far as the public's concerned. What benefit would it do to our public, the people that live here? We notice it sometimes when we drive by. I've been tunnel visioned a few times and didn't even, was oblivious to it sitting where it's sitting. I don't, I see it, but I don't see it, you know? We kind of get used to these things. Some people love things like this for the historic value and what it's meant to the community in the past. But as far as the gift itself, I think it's a good gesture from this family, but it'll be a rather expensive gift from the city. So I just want y'all to be aware of that. I've looked at it with, trying to look at it with totally open eyes and a concept of what to recommend, and it's just a hard call for me. I'll just be honest with you. Now, you know, it used to fit with this property. We haven't really found a spot without taking something away from our new City Hall. We have quite found a spot that we want to locate that building. If we take it on this property, we're gonna be compelled to totally redecorate it and make it look like it fits, because today it would be a sore thumb to move it over here in the condition it's in. And we're just going with that kind of appearance. These numbers I used are strictly estimates. Some of them are based on pretty sound knowledge and background of some of the research we've done. And some of them could be a little high, some a little low. Just fixing the building's not gonna be a real easy thing, because there's a good bit of deteriorated material that's gotta come out of it before the new materials can go back in it.
And some under it.
Yeah, and some under it. Wade had his big lie, and we looked under it, and there's gonna be some foundation work that's beyond what we can readily see on top.
You still can't just, just, just taking that out. It's just putting it back in.
Yeah, the cockers will work both ways. When they build demolition something, it's not cheap. We found that out at the rec center. It costs a lot to tear things up, and then putting them back with new stuff's expensive. Gene's been in the building business. He knows it's easy to underestimate a job too. He told us when we started this rec center thing, "You better count on more than your account." It was exactly true, just like he said, so... This is just something that I think we need to let them know. If we're not gonna accept the gift, then we need to let them be looking for another person. If we're gonna accept the gift, we need to obligate for it. But we'll, I'm gonna want y'all to vote on this next Monday night. If that's okay, put it on the agenda. So vote your conscience. I'm not gonna sway you. I just want you to know the facts about it, as we found them. Wade and I gave it a pretty good look see, and did I represent the building about like we found it?
Pretty much that way, I mean.
Once we all get ourselves, we all will get my next bunch and my next, and that's going on forever. And it's such an, it's not... Actually, I think we all know, I guess the word is, it's not worth fixing up. You know, of what it would cost, and it'll go down in a hurry under the condition of how it's built.
It's already been moved on.
Yeah, it's been moved twice, I think.
You know, I'd say if, you know, you go and redo it and all that, and you go and put a new talk or protect it, so there's another, you know, another...
It looks pretty good, but it's not new.
No, it's not new.
Well, I'd like for the facts and all of them to know that we appreciate them offering it to us, and we're not turning it down for anything connected with them. Because I, actually, I appreciate them and thank the world for what Ranick and I've done for Marion County. But I can't, that's just a pretty good expense for the taxpayers there to keep that up, fix it, and then keep it fixed.
We're, we're looking back three generations, actually with Buddy's sons, we'll be looking back four generations to the great-grandfathers. This is the great-grandfather's law clause.
Yeah.
This is not Mr. Rankin's laws.
Right.
It's his daddy's laws.
Right.
And Buddy is ready to give it up. And he said his sons really didn't have an interest in keeping it in the family, so... We're looking back four generations now. There may be another generation of adolescents, I don't know. But we're looking back at least four generations to the origin of this building, so... I hardly know... I'm gonna let all of you vote your conscience, and I'll vote mine. And I'm gonna lay it out as an item for a vote. And I hope we don't get too hung up on the discussion part. I'm gonna have a clear mind about it when we get there. And we've, we've got to decide, because there's people in the Williams that sold and traded on properties now, and they're expecting that to come off the property in ample time. It doesn't have to happen immediately, but within a scope of time, they'll want it removed. And if we vote yes, then we'll get on with it. If we vote no, then they'll know to move on to the next person that might want or need the building. We basically discussed some things at the last meeting that was not on the agenda, but we've had a little talk about it, and that's the one cent sales tax that would be dedicated to paving. I've got the report from Allen Catrill as to the amount of money the one cent sales tax would mean to Hamilton in a year's period of time. It's about a million twenty thousand dollars for a one-year period.
Just one percent?
Just the one percent sales tax. The three percent city sales tax now is bringing us about three million nineteen thousand a year.
What are you talking about, a million what?
A million, roughly a million twenty, million five to million twenty. If our sales tax revenue keeps growing, it'd be more like a million twenty. If this one cent hurts us in our retail sales, then it could be less by, you know, whatever trade you run off by raising taxes. Sometimes we get people upset with us, and they wouldn't trade you for the extra one cent. And this is just only, the rumor mill has brought this to my ears, that possibly the county's exploring ways to pay for this new complex, the judicial complex. And a one cent sales tax from the county's not out of the question either. So that pushes on past the ten percent, that pushes to eleven percent sales tax. And I'm thinking that would be... That would be a tough road. Oh, if we go to eleven, I think that's, Scarlett broke the camel's back. Since we might as well put up a sand, pull them's that way, because they got a seven percent sales tax. I think that eleven percent would certainly send them down the road.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So I don't know the real truth about that. The person that talked to me said he had actually heard this voiced in meetings that that could be one, one chance that the county would want to impose a sales tax to help pay for the new judicial complex. That would include a jail, courtroom, maybe a judge's chamber, DA's office, sheriff's office, that kind of thing. So we do know that they're researching a place to put a jail now. And they've decided that probably they'll need a three hundred prison jail built along with the rest of the judicial complex. So the money, Gene, is there. It's a lot of money, a million dollars is a lot of money. And that's, we don't know... I believe what we saw on the phone the other day, our part of the new taxes was roughly sixty thousand, sixty-eight thousand dollars. While the mayor in Hailville understands he's gonna get maybe a hundred and fifty-one thousand. He thinks that based on our population, we should be entitled to more. But I told him that the number of cities in Winston County versus the number of cities in Marion County is probably why we're not getting a larger portion of money. It's gotta be divided between eight in the spires in Marion County and five or six in Winston County. So this new tax, it's just for the pass of the state. I don't really know the facts and figures on that. Immediately, we'll see six percent added to the, almost immediately, we'll see six percent added to the taxes. Then the next two years, two cents each, going up to a total of ten cents a gallon on taxation for gasoline. And out of that, we're supposed to get some money, but it'd be not near what we need to do all the work we're talking about. I don't know to have that's money that we can take from other places like our general fund to put into paving. I'd say a limited amount based on our expenses right now. And we're gonna need to add up some money somewhere down the road when they fix the new entrances to Lowe's. We've got three hundred thousand dollars from ARC, and three hundred thousand on development grants. A total of three hundred thousand, let me get it right, a hundred and fifty each from ARC and the economic development office. And the cost of putting those new turn lanes and entrances for Lowe's is gonna be about five hundred and fifty thousand. So we're gonna be about two fifty short on our grants. So we're gonna have to add you up that money sometime while this Lowe's is being built. It'll be built mostly in two thousand twenty. This is nineteen, it's gonna be built in two thousand twenty. So that can be pushed out to the next budget, next year's budget, but it's gonna have to be fit in there somewhere while they're building the Lowe's. Those road improvements have got to be made. They're due here. Truck turn lane and a car turn lane and a center lane on thirty-five that takes on all that new traffic that's gonna be pulled in. So we've got, we've got to come up with a part of that money. We'll have a portion of it, three hundred thousand. We know we've got that coming, but we'll have to make up the rest of it. That's just, that's one expense we've got to look at, so... The sales tax raises lots of money. I think it's gonna be a real bitter pill if there's two cents put on the people. I just don't see...
Now, where did that, when I was talking before, I wasn't, I don't think I was ever talking about two percent.
Yeah, but if the county comes up with one, to pay for this thing...
I knew that I wasn't talking about the two percent.
One percent for two years is what you propose.
Yeah, yeah.
And to automatically come off.
Everything, yeah, and automatically come off, and every penny of that collected would go on paving the streets of town, and then nothing else.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, if you don't, you put one cent, and we're already above everybody else. I understand that, so...
We just gotta, we gotta be real cautious in this, and in the... We don't want it any way hurt our retail margins. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to fix our roads.
Now, if we hurt them, we'll defeat the purpose.
That's right.
Because see, if we lose what we gained from them, we can't afford to hurt them, but...
Mike, I want you to leave up to the front room. Pull you up a chair. I want you to talk about our drive we made, our visit down to the shop. Just pull you up a chair. Talk right here about us, yeah.
I'll sit there.
Where we've all seen it.
I guess the mayor and I toured it, what, two hours, two and a half hours?
We covered it. Or at least two hours.
We covered a lot of territory and discussed, you know, which roads we thought would be possible that we asphalt, and which ones we thought we could chip and seal, which is what we do in-house. We have to contract for the asphalt work. But we covered several roads and pointed out problems here and problems there. And basically, there wasn't a road that we went down that there wasn't some, some kind of problem on the bench with. We spent a lot of time out at Oak Hill subdivision, Oak Hill circle, Ballard subdivision, south of town, National Avenue, which has previously been asphalted. But we did cover most, of course, not all of town, or somewhere, probably two hundred fifty to three hundred city roads in town. Somewhere around forty square miles is what the last consensus I saw had in it. Well, that may be a little higher or lower. I don't, I'm not exact on that number, but that's what the consensus said. A lot of the roads, my honest opinion is, that need to be asphalt. And Mayor and I discussed this a little bit about this was more starting in the downtown area and kind of spreading out from there. Excuse me. What we, when I had previously thought back in two thousand fourteen that we would go and get in some specific subdivisions, maybe top some subdivision out there or out in Oak Hills, that area, and up on Highway seventeen where that little subdivision up there and the top of the hill on the left, those areas, and a few other streets in town. At that time, in fourteen, what the mayor and I was doing, what we thought we'd do then was around six hundred thousand dollars. Maybe closer to seven hundred thousand, but... But reflect, or looking back, our downtown area, and when I say that, what used to be called Baby Street, or if you turn in there and go up those, all those streets are in bad repair too, where we've had to dig into them to replace water lines, sewer lines, and all those things. And I would think now that there's probably as much traffic going down those streets as there is out in the subdivision where you've got more houses, but not necessarily traveled as much as some of the downtown streets. And on top of that, most of those streets have been asphalted before. So basically, what I think you'd have to do is put just a wear layer on top and smooth them off. Whereas if you do a chip and seal road like we do, you're pretty much gonna have to go down to the base and start over. So you can save some costs there by doing that. But it's still gonna cost a lot of money to do whatever we do. It's about somewhere around seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars a mile to do asphalt work. Now, probably less than that if you just can put maybe a three or four inch wear layer on top. So that kind of tells you that what we did last week is to kind of do a survey of what we were trying to work with.
Let's talk about our visit, let's talk about our visit to the shop you showed me.
Okay.
me.
Okay.
What you were doing with the down lane, let's talk about that.
Okay. So, basically now, what we're, I'll tell you what we're doing now as far as trying to keep roads repaired. We shovel, uh, two guys go around in a patch truck and they shovel cobits out of the back of the truck and they'll just put it in the pothole or whatever and tack it down or, or pack it down in there. And that's basically all we have to do, that's all we've got to do with. Uh, we don't have any specialized equipment for that. Uh, what needs to be done is there needs to be seal put in the bottom of the hole and, uh, and then put your aggregate in there, tar and, or tar and slag mixed together or whatever and you seal it back over the top of it. We've got to the point now where we've got so much, so many potholes that we can go down a road and patch all the potholes, but to cover all of them that we've done that with, we can't. We just don't have the time or the machinery to do it with. And, uh, so naturally, over a few weeks, possibly a few months, that hose can pop back out because it's welded in there. Uh, so, we're basically just working with shovels and, and, uh, two men in a truck and two shovels is basically what we're working, working with. Sometimes we might get two trucks out there with four guys on there, but, uh, and that's usually just a half a day because I have to pull someone off the garbage truck to, to do that in the afternoons. That's their job in the afternoon, just come over and work on the, on the street side. Our tar truck, uh, don't hold me to these exact year models, but I think the truck itself is a nineteen eighty-one truck, maybe an eighty-four with a nineteen sixty-one distributor on the back of it. And you can imagine, uh, we spend as much time working on that truck as we do actually using it. It's, it's so, it's old, we can only shoot sixteen feet at a time, we can't bring it in any shorter, we can't go any wider. It's a fixed, uh, distributor on the back that just folds it down to sixteen feet. Uh, all the pins, the bushings, the, uh, gaskets and all that stuff is, is just worn out. Before we start this year, we're probably gonna have to spend two days just trying to get it to work, and that's, that's been that way ever since I've been there. Uh, so, all that being said, I know there's a lot of interest on getting the roads back in good shape, uh, but we can only do what we can do with what we've got. So, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, we've got to invest some money in equipment for the streets if we're gonna ever maintain them. We, we can't, uh, I mean, it's just, it's not gonna get any better until we do, that's my personal opinion. And, uh, I went ahead and looked the other day, and the mayor and down there, we did look at what equipment we've got. We're in pretty decent shape, uh, on dump trucks. I've got three dump trucks back during the winter, uh, we went through them pretty good. I put new paint on the beds and, and done some welding and all that stuff. As far as two of the dump trucks, they're in pretty good shape. The third one we use, uh, the, the one that's not as, well, the one that's more and more than the rest of them, uh, we use it to haul gravel and something that we don't really, if we have to dump a big load of rip raff or something in there, then we'd rather do that in this older truck than we've had the others. Don't get me wrong, those, those trucks are old too. Prior to me coming to work for the city, I would say the la, the first, the last piece of equipment they bought was a gravel truck and prior to that, and that was when, uh, I guess Andy Chilwell was mayor or Bobby Holliday at the time, uh, that was the first piece of equipment, or the last piece of equipment that was bought since I've been here. Everything else has been there probably twenty to thirty years or longer, no new equipment since then.
Now, trico's are very new and successful.
Six, and I'm not trying to back myself, but it might, uh, and I, I'm proud of it to look at it and know where it's from.
I do.
But we did, we, we perked, since I've been there, we purchased up, uh, we took on some additional responsibilities as far as taking care of the properties around town, the city hall, the Hamilton house, a, a lot of things that we have to mow and take care of. You know, we take care of about twenty, twenty pieces of property that, that people don't realize probably that we do, but we do that. So, we purchased, my first purchase, I bought a new riding lawnmower, some weed acres and that kind of stuff to take care of that. Uh, I bought a new, uh, flatbed dump truck, uh, tonne truck with a flatbed on it that we used to put, or we're using now to put out the patch material with. Uh, we've, we've been able to purchase one of those. I was able to purchase a, a tonne and a half truck with a nice trailer, uh, from the water department, maybe a couple of years ago, three years, might be something like that, that we can now haul our dozer, our backhoe, trackhoe, all those things, instead of having to drive them up and down the road. Prior to that, if we had to go pipeful down there with a backhoe, we had to drive it down there, which is naturally where those things happen. So, over the period of time, I've tried to update, to at least get into the twentieth century of what we had to accomplish, you know, and, uh, we, we, we've taken on a lot of extra responsibility. Uh, our men wanna do a good job, I really believe that, and, and sometimes it's, it's just hard to do a good job of what we got to do with. Uh, I think they've done the best they could do with what we got. So, I don't wanna be long-winded, but yesterday I had a guy, Wade and I, we were doing some work over at, uh, in town here with, putting out some slag and Wade was there and I stopped by and we, we talked briefly about a patching machine. The county has one, uh, it's a two-man operation, uh, that hooks to a dump truck and you pull it around on the trailer and it mixes your slag and tar together, it seals the hole. Uh, you, first you blow the hole out and get all of loose residue out of the bottom of the hole, then you, uh, spray the tar in there and it seals the hole and it mixes the aggregate, your tar and slag together and puts it in the hole. And then you come back over the top of that with a, a thin layer of just grass slag and that hole's fixed. It's just like it would be if you were to chip and seal the whole road. Uh, it works real good on potholes. Uh, you know, if you're working in a pothole and you don't have a, a hole, if the top of the layer of the road is just broken off and you don't have something to hold that code patch in there, then it just, you know, a few days, it's just gone. So, this, this machine, uh, had a guy from Montgomery to bring one up yesterday, demonstrated to us, and, uh, my opinion is to catch me out of each pothole with me. Obviously, it, it did an excellent job. Uh, I think in the long run, you, you would save on buying code patch. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but the, last year and the first two months of this year, we spent twenty, right at twenty-three thousand dollars just patching potholes. This time next year, you won't even know we've been there, you know, it, it's gone, you know, and it, to me, that's just a waste of our money. Uh, but we gotta do it because that's the only way now that we've got to do it. Uh, I'd really, I, I'd really like the city to invest, if the city invests in one of those patch machines.
That's what I was fixing to ask.
Yeah.
If that would help do the job with.
I believe it would.
What, what is the cost of that machine or something?
He quoted me a price yesterday of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and some odd dollars.
And you think it'd pay for itself pretty quick?
Well, I, I, I can go, I can tell you what he told me. Frankton County bought one and he says he hasn't bought any code patch since. So, if you go by that, and I can see where it could, he's probably right, uh, you, you're of course taking your own slag, I, I mean, we back in bulk, you know, and the CRS two, the tar that we use, it, it basically makes that code patch, but it seals as it goes. Uh, so, over a three-year period, if you continue to spend twenty-three thousand dollars, then it's paid for, you know, uh, not gonna say it's gonna be a hundred percent paid for by then because I don't actually know how much, how much we're gonna save by doing it that way, but I know we'd save a lot on time, labor and material.
Because it lasts a lot too, wouldn't it say?
It lasts a lot more than what they're doing now. You know, sometimes we go patch a whole mound and a week or two later, your batch packed and patched in again. Uh, in addition to that, uh, while I'm asking, we need a tar truck, a tar dispenser. One we've got is completely wore out. Uh, we got two, we got trucks now that, that are all operated from the cab, uh, everything is remote from inside the cab, the, the spray nozzles will go out there, whatever dimension you want it to go to, uh, you, you have a certain rate of tar that you should be putting down per foot. So, if you're running five miles an hour and you're putting down at a rate, and you speed up to ten miles an hour and you're still putting down at that same rate, then you're getting it too thin, you're getting it too thick, and we have no way of regulating that. This truck, they don't have any of that stuff on there, our truck that does that, but the new ones, I mean, they're just so much more efficient and, and you can control what you're doing a lot better than what.
What's the cost of one of those?
Well, I'm not recommending that we buy a new one of those.
Yeah, but it'd use for me to go with the.
Well, I, I, I can only tell you that a few years back, there was one on our lot surplus that had, I think, fifty to eighty thousand miles on it and it was around thirty or forty thousand dollars and they passed on it. And it was a mistake, to be honest with you. If you could find one for that price now, it'd be.
And that's what, that's what. This week added Mike to the ability to log into the service and look at everything that's available. We're hoping they can find a, a, a remote control internal cab, the remote, remote control was sale, it's in surplus, and we don't know that to be available, but we got it, we're gonna send.
We're gonna, we're gonna see what's, we're gonna see what's.
Can we come up with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a whole?
Well, I can tell you this, in Angel, may I have to correct me, I'm not sure, but I think I had around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in my equipment base. If it's about a truck, it's forty-two thousand dollars, so that leaves me somewhere around seventy thousand dollars. I could purchase that, 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 uh, deer patch machine. Still have a few thousand dollars left in my budget, not much, five, six, seven thousand dollars probably left in that budget. And I wanna check with Scott Hunt to make sure, but I think, I think the money from the seventeen gas and oil tax money can be used to purchase paving equipment, to purchase paving equipment. If so, we had somewhere probably last year started, we had around three hundred thousand dollars with our, on our gas tax money that's used specifically for paving. So, if we could use, and I'm thinking maybe this year we should, maybe somewhere close to that amount, is that right?
Yes.
So, if we could spend fifty thousand dollars of that for a miss, for, for, uh, for a tar distributor, that would leave us somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars, just around number, to do our, our paving. And we'll get, and that would get us started. Then the following year, then we would be able to do a lot more paving or chip and seal, and we, we'd be set. And then as the money continues to increase that we're gonna get from our Lowe's and all that stuff, then we would be able to better maintain what we got. We've got to start at some point, get an equipment to do what we actually need to do. And I can, I think we can do, do it that way.
Well, we got, like you said, we got to try and get to start somewhere.
That's right.
If we have to, while we're here, if we have to come up with some more money, we just got to do it, but we're going back. There's no question, we're backing up.
Well, we're, we're not making much signs.
No, well, you don't have anything to make a sign with.
Right.
I mean, that's just the facts. They let it go and let it go, that's really, the roads are in such bad shape. And I'd make the recommendation, I'd vote to, we'd look into it, just what you're speaking of and buy the equipment if you can for that and.
Well, and another thing too, this, this patch machine that I'm talking about, uh, a lot of this stuff you can buy without having to go through a bid process, it's already been bidded out. Uh, we, we bought that, uh, uh, cat, that Caterpillar trackhoe. We and, and the company that we bought that from were both members of NJPA, which is a national joint purchasing thing, which automatically, when you, when you buy like that, it automatically puts it at the state bid price. So, to make a long story short, say you want a Caterpillar, but you've gotta have these specific things on there, whatever it may be, certain kind of tire or certain kind of engine and all that stuff. Well, any other company, it may not be a Caterpillar, it may be a Komatsu, but it's got that engine in there, it's got that certain kind of power and all that stuff. Well, you're bidding against all of that stuff. So, the one that comes in the cheapest price, if you're specifically wanting a Caterpillar because you know it's gonna last a lot longer than a, well, the same for Komatsu, I don't know what the price of one of those is, but it's, uh, because it may be a few thousand dollars cheaper, you're forced to buy that one under a bid process, which may not be what you want, but that's the one that's been cheaper, so that's what you gotta get if you're gonna purchase one. Through the NJ, NJPA, you don't necessarily have to do that, that way. You can specify exactly what you want and it's into that bid process already. You have to work with people that are both, that are members of those things. This, this, uh, patching machine is a member of the Al, Alabama joint purchasing thing. So, we could pers, you know, if this is the specific one we want, then we can do it through there and not have to necessarily go through the bid process if it's already been bid. Uh, so, it's kind of, it's kind of a better way of purchasing things, I think, because you get what you want.
Yeah, I tell.
Not necessarily what you gotta have at that price.
Mike, now, I, I looked at this thing because people jumped on me about when we put tax on to do the paving and things. And you got some TV shows and things that are jumping out there and talking about it. But if you'll look, most of these people that are doing the yelling are living on good street, on good roads. Them, they don't understand, I live on Highway seventy-eight, a state road. We've got a lot of state and county roads in the city limits down there, and these roads are kept up with the state and the county. They've got good road, but the ones that are doing the grappling, they don't wanna help pay for the roads in these subdivisions where these people are having to run through potholes and, and everything else. And they're a part of the city, but their roads are bad and the ones that seems like they're doing grappling are living on roads like I live on. And, and I, I, I can feel for the people living out there where they're having to run through potholes and things too.
Well, I feel for them, you know, uh, you try your best to get to a state or state highway so you'll have a good road to ride.
That, that's right, that's right. And, and so, so.
Yeah, and I apologize to people that they're in the shade during, but I can promise you, we're doing the very best that we can do, uh, with the amount of money, the funds that we have. But I can promise you, we're doing the very best that we can do with the amount of money, the funds that we have to work with and the, and the equipment we got.
And if we don't start somewhere, all of these roads are going, I don't know what they're going to do, say seven or eight, ten, more years down.
Well, if it keeps going like this, they're going to be, you're not going to be able to repair them. You're going to have, if you do anything, you're going to have to just basically start all over. We've got to get on one that's still.
New work, right. But a lot of people, see, people don't really, well, anyway. If you're living on good roads, you don't realize what other people are living on.
You can go down some of the roads that we do, that we've done in the past, and it turns out a pretty good road. Granted, it's not asphalt, but a good chip and seal road is, is a, is a good road. And that's not going, it's, it's not designed to carry a fifty thousand or twenty-eight ton or whatever, a big dump truck and log trucks. Unfortunately, we've got a lot of loggers and I know they got to make a living.
A lot of the city limits in the last few years, they tear up a road.
That was really.
Do a number on them.
You don't blame you go cross Rabbit Hill.
We've got, Mike, we've got Mike looking into some improvements equipment wise. Let's move forward at a good pace with everybody informed, let's, let's, let's jump, let's jump when it's jump time, let's don't jump before it's jump time on any of these roads. We got to improve our streets and that, and I think having something to work with is going to be key in this. Now, Mike went to his shop and he showed me what they were working with. I, I'm honest, I don't, I don't know how they've been doing the job they've been doing. And he said, as he says, on code patching, they've got the dump truck and, and two shovels, two men willing to put it out with the shovels. They run the wheels over where they patched and that, that's the extent of patching a pothole now. It's, it's not nearly like the, the machine he's talking about, it does a complete job and reseals that slot and, and makes it last.
If y'all are interested at some point, if you want a representative to come down with, with the equipment and show it to you. Talk to him and he'd say he'd be more than happy to, if somebody wants to look at him and see firsthand. Wade was down there today and I showed him a place that they, a small place there where shoulder had no cross the road and made a little ditch over there and they repaired it. Just kind of demo it, show him and.
That's it, so, I think it'd be a great thing. Now, the county got one.
Yes.
And they love it, they're like, talk to them, they're already lunge it over there and.
It's all.
They just really.
Yeah, it's all, one person can run the machine on the back.
Mike, you just need to look into this, what you're speaking of. You know about what we can afford to go ahead and do now and buy and get this thing started to fix these roads that are in such bad, bad shape and.
It would enable them to cover more ground in the summer's time than, than what he's working with now. They have to spend a lot of time just getting it up and running to make sure that it's going to pave it.
Spend hours just every morning before we patch, which is hour or two hours, just getting it together.
I'd like to give a big, big shout out over the Tubby Ways to our state boys that I call them boys, they're all grown men and fine men. They, after a letter that I wrote to Mr. Wes Spillers and Mr. Philip Hugh, requesting some help down here at the forty-three bridge. They've come in there and done a magnificent, magnificent job cleaning that out, getting that sand and sealed out where that water can flow free again under that forty-three bridge. Mike's about to take his crew over and do the maintenance over at Carolyn's Bridge. We think this is going to be a real, real change in the flow of that creek. Raggedelle Creek's been a problem for some time now, and we really think we're making headways and being able to get that flow going where. And, and another thing, Steve Davis asked Mr. Wes Spillers, he said, give me one more chance at that flood drain down there by First State Bank. They broke through it and it's draining free now. One last attempt, they didn't have to dig the roads up. So, our state guys over here are just absolutely great at doing their work. They've got good equipment to work with, it's amazing to watch them down there with their track skid and the steer, skid they had down there dipping that sand and those two track hoes. Getting all that under brush and moving it away. And then Steve broke through that obstacle that was keeping our drain line from draining there around First State and around First Baptist's property and all down that street. It's flowing free again, and boy, that, that was a real blessing right there. But I'm going to give the state guys a big shout out today on, on the airways and I'm proud of them and their work. I think, working forward, guys, with the right frame of mind, we can get a lot accomplished. We know money's not plentiful right now, but we are going to get some additional revenue out of this tax thing that's just happened. I'd like to get us something worthy to work with and see how much we can really influence the looks of our streets before we just jump on this tax immediately and pass it out. I hope that's the last thing we have to do resort to and, and it may come to that, but I just hope we can see what we can do this summer. With our increased gasoline revenues and some good equipment to work with, putting some patches down and work and hold. Instead of having to go back every few days and redo them, I think is a good effort. We went down to the shop, had a long discussion about it, Wade's been trying to help Mike with some pointers, showing him this piece of equipment. I think it's very valuable to us, I appreciate your efforts, Lee, and trying to help out with that. Let's just all work together and see what we can do. We'll have a few things on Monday night's agenda that we need to address, but I appreciate everybody coming today. Unless we have something else that y'all want to bring up, I don't have anything else on the agenda. We are going to need to talk about a new job posting, right?
Yes, that's going to be on Monday's agenda. We're going to have to post a job for a maintenance worker at the rec center, because we've got one that's fixing to retire. We've got one that's retiring in the water department and we're going to have to, that's on the agenda, promote one of the in. So there's going to be some changes coming up and those, those things will be on the agendas, so y'all have to vote on, you know, agreeing with the promotion and then changing the rate of paying for that job. And then posting the job to the rec center.
Is this a thing that Mike said to us about our grants, that we have to engage in some sort of agreement on the Fulton Bridge area? Is that going to have to be on this?
Yes, yes, because you know, we put it off from the last time. And, and we've got, we're getting down to the wire, we're going to apply for this grant, that we've, we've got to have this in and that, that's your, on the agenda to pass that resolution. It's just basically accepting the application that we're going to apply for these grants. And in doing so, that we're also agreeing to, to pledge that additional two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars that's going to have to go with the three-hundred thousand that we're getting from these grants. To complete that project for the Lowe's Truck Stop. So that's what the resolution is about.
While I was talking to Alan Campbell this morning about the revenue that the one cent tax was raised. He said, I've looked at your numbers in addition to looking at the new revenue that that one cent was raised. And he said, you guys are a little ahead of your budget this year. He said, your overall income is better than we projected in your budget. And he, he said, you're a little ahead in revenues so far this year, so that was his words as of this morning. And he didn't talk to me about expenses, this kind of thing, but we know we've got some upcoming expenses. We're still paying off the rest of the contract at the rec center. By the way, the roofers are almost finished over there, if y'all want to see a brand new roof going to build it, they'll, they'll let you go with that ladder. I'll tell you, if you want to see that roof, you just climb that ladder over there and take a look at it.
I'll leave on board.
I'll get the fire department boys, stack the drone up there, make you a good, that'll make you a good picture, show you.
I've been one of those low truck stops yesterday, it's amazing. The business they did, they lined up, paying.
I was the one in Memphis, Tennessee yesterday. And man, they were so busy, they couldn't take all the money that was being handed to them. Cashiers was taking it with both hands. It was an amazing thing to see.
I think two cash register go in, you know. Like, like regular.
So do I need to add the law office vote on me at?
Yeah, we didn't vote on that, to get the figure word as to whether or not we're going to, if we're not going to take the law office, we need to let them know because right now, we're in possession of the key. We didn't, you know, if we keep that key too long, somebody might say, you know, a churros. And we may want to keep the key, I'm going to let us vote on that. That'll be, you vote your contents, your heart. I just want you to know, it's going to be an expensive thing to do and it's going to be an expensive thing ongoing. And with that said, I'll let you make up your mind.
We're going to light on our plate right now anyway.
If, if we had, if we had a bonus or excess of money, I'd be more flexible about my thoughts on it. But I'm a little bit rigid right now with, with it being as tight as it is.
Unlike you, I would be too. If we had the money, I'd be glad to do it.
But it's going to cost us over fifty thousand dollars initially to own that thing and then upkeep going forward is going to be considerable.
Are we ready to add the purchase of that patch machine that Mike's talking about? Does that need to be on the agenda for Monday?
I want, I want everybody to want it and I, I'd like to see a demonstration of it, Mike, I'd like to hear us bring it. Wherever we got to bring it, if we want to bring it right here, we got a few places we can do this right here. But I'd rather everybody see it and be satisfied that it's going to be the job for us.
If I can't get the one back anytime soon, then possibly we can get the county, get the county.
Demonstrate theirs, we'll set up time when we can just drive over and watch it work. I'd like to see one of them working operationally.
Let me now come take a picture. Let me now come take a picture.
Absolutely, you'll be notified. Wade, if you will come and film it, we'll, we'll let you do the same.
It's not like a plan B.
Thank y'all and I appreciate everything the council does, I appreciate the good work you men do. Doctor Patterson, you have it, it's really important to us.
Thank you, appreciate it.